Bienvenidos a la reunión de octubre de la Comunidad de la Comunidad de la Libertad Antes de empezar, Penn Wilson querría hacer una solicitud.
Gracias. Como todos saben, estamos adoptando 24 familias para una cena completa de navidad este año. Así que estamos pidiendo donaciones. Queremos ver si la gente estará dispuesta a donar un poco de dinero, una torta de púrpura, un par de cajas de salsa de manzana. Tenemos el refri cubierto, tenemos los 24 turques cubiertos.
25.
No, sí, 25 turques cubiertos y patatas frescas, 100 libras de patatas para estas 24 familias. Pero estamos llegando un poco corto con todas las cosas como salsa de manzana, pan de la cena, cajas de galletas, y podríamos usar un poco de crema de leche porque ¿qué es la torta de púrpura sin crema de leche? Y tuve una epifanía anoche por la mitad de la noche: "Oh, no tenemos olives". Y es mi comprensión, aunque no los como, que las olives son una parte integral de la fiesta. Así que si me gustara meter una caja de olives también, eso sería maravilloso. Así que tengo una lista de cosas, si ustedes quieren poner su nombre en ella, si pueden entregar algo, gracias señor. O un envelope, si quieren poner dinero en él y devolverlo a mí.
¿Podemos bailar?
Al final de la tarde. ¡Oh!
I was gonna put it in your drawer.
Gracias, señores. Estamos en camino. En camino, creo que voy a dejar esto y pasar el envelope, o puedo pasar el帽子, lo que sea que haga que sea lo más cómodo. Anoche solo pudimos hacer turques, este año vamos a intentar hacer una comida completa para todos. Para 24 familias, estamos obteniendo listas de las dos escuelas de primer grado en la zona de Lance. Y tenemos 12 familias de cada... 12 familias de cada comodidad. ¿Vosotros...? ¿Es esto cierto? Puedo preguntarle de vosotros también. Cool. Lo tomaré aquí en Lance.
Ya lo cubrí.
Oh, debe ser bueno. De todos modos, apreciamos cualquier cosa que puedas hacer para ayudar. Hay mucha gente allá afuera que está mucho peor que nosotros. Así que esperamos mejorar las cosas. Y si ya han donado a los otros fondos, fundadores que tenemos aquí, no sean como si tuvieran que hacerlo dos veces. Una vez es maravilloso y apreciamos cualquier ayuda que podamos dar para nuestros diversos proyectos que tenemos en marcha estos días. Así que pasaré el帽子 en un poco de tiempo, y ahora David va a tomar el poder y tendremos una reunión oficial. Muchas gracias.
Vale, gracias Penn. Mantengan las donaciones. Tenemos algunos anuncios antes de empezar. Comodidad con la Comunidad es este sábado, el 13 de octubre. Nombra el centro de conexión de la comunidad de 10603, southeast Henderson, a las 8:15 para la comida, y luego nos envían a nuestras varias tareas. El 20 de octubre, tendremos la memoria del Tom Slay en el 9623, southeast Langwood, a las 2:00 p.m. La comida de BFW será el 21 de octubre en el American Legion Hall. Sé que eso suena confuso, pero ahí es donde se está haciendo la comida. Y está ubicado en 8329, southeast 89th Avenue, a las 9:30 a.m. Nuestro buen amigo Danny está cuidándonos allí. Así que esta noche, sin más preámbulos, nuestros oradores invitados son Daryl Turner, presidente de la voz de Portland, Angela Orr es Daryl's ex-assistente, ex-assistente. Y creo que Randy Tykes estaría aquí, pero no lo he visto. Supongo que no. Él se retiró. Oí un rumor de que iba a estar aquí incluso cuando él es un retirado o un ex-sargento de la precincta de este este. De metro tenemos a Taylor Ritter, compliance and cleanup; Will Ennis, inspector de instalaciones de la ciudad; y Dan Blue, policy specialists de la ciudad. Así que a este punto me gustaría centrarme en Daryl Turner. Y el cuero es vuestro.
Y voy a tratar de salir del micrófono porque estoy manipulando el papel, así que si no puedes escuchar, déjame hablar. Vaya. Ahí está. Quiero agradecer a todos por haber estado aquí para hablar hoy, para compartir ideas y para compartir información. Como sabéis, he estado hablando mucho con muchos grupos de personas, asociaciones de comunidades, organizaciones sobre los problemas de las personas que experimentan la homelessness, problemas de la movilidad en nuestras comunidades y la ciudad de Portland. Y todos estamos afectados por eso, no importa quién somos, no importa de dónde vengo, no importa qué comunidad vivimos, todos estamos afectados por eso. Y no hemos visto soluciones efectivas para este problema. No vamos a resolver este problema con una solución. Hay muchas soluciones y muchas opciones para poder ayudar a resolver este problema. La homelessness nunca se resolverá, pero podemos reducirlo lo suficiente para que sea movilidad para todos, movilidad para las personas que experimentan la homelessness, así como las personas que viven en las comunidades. Tenemos que pensar en eso también porque son las personas más afectadas por los problemas de la movilidad. Pero ahora mismo nuestros funcionarios electos no están escuchando a nosotros, no están mirando todas las opciones. Nuestros dólares tributarios hartos que la gente paga en el condado de Moona y la ciudad de Portland no están siendo usados efectivamente. Y podemos ver eso en las calles todos los días. Anyone who was here 20 years ago, 30 years ago, 40 years ago, can see the changes. I've been a Portland police officer for 27 years, and I've seen the changes. I've seen the changes from going from a beautiful city, a a city that people love to come to and visit, as well as people came here and rose to move here, and now look at what we have right now. I have some things, some statistics on it, so I'm going to have to read off of those because I don't know them by heart. But some of the statistics I have just from a downtown area, 213 blocks that clean and safe, they clean up, they patrol every day. And just in the month of September, they clean up 75 tons of trash off the streets and sidewalks and under the bridges in different places. 4,154 biohazards removed. Feces, urine, condoms, things like that. 3,100 needles picked up. 3,100 opportunities for somebody to step on, touch, get pooped by. Obviously, some of those needles are affected with hepatitis, HIV, and other blood-borne pathogens. And over 3,300 graffiti tags moved from buildings, structures. These are private businesses, a lot of buildings and structures. Since 2013, we've gone from... The needles that are found in the street have increased 395%. This is just in this area that is clean, safe and clean. Garbage has gone up 68%. Again, this is not garbage that are in garbage cans, this is garbage that are on our streets, our sidewalks, under our bridges. The biohazards have increased by 63%. And the graffiti has increased by 70%. So when our elected officials are telling us that they're using our taxes as lies, how can that be happening when these things are happening? This is just in one small area of the town. Imagine what the whole city's like. We've seen our neighborhoods change. And one of the reasons we see our neighborhoods change is because there's not a viable off-ramp for people who are living in homelessness. We have to be able to get them places to live. We can't move them from block to block to block, from business door to business door to business door, from house to house to house. We have to have places for them to go, viable options for transitional housing until they can get affordable housing and permanent housing, and get the resources they need, and get the programs and things that they need to be able to then circle back into a successful off-ramp, because right now that's not happening. Just like those young men in uniform, I call them young except for Dave, because he's old. But those young men in uniform, we went out there every day, and we go out there every day, and we try to make successful off-ramps, but we can't do it by ourselves. Our elected officials are telling you that if we tell you that our hands are tied, call in. But guess what? Our hands are tied. And we're not going to lie to you out there in the street. We're not going to tell you, "I can fix all this and this won't happen again", because guess what? Because then you say, "Those officers lied to me" because that person's bad. We cannot do that. But what we can do is find viable options, and that's why I've been talking a lot, and a lot of people here have been talking about Wapato. A facility that cost us as the taxpayers, anybody who just run that penny taxes in the Moona County, in 2003, $58 million. Every year after it was built, it was about $400,000 to maintain with nobody in there. The bond measure for that expired when it was paid off in 2016, and as soon as it was paid off, Deborah Cefory and the other county commissioners looked to sell it. They sold it at a 90% discount to a private business owner. A 90% discount to a private business owner. They went to the voters to vote to get the money. They didn't go to the voters to sell it, though, did they?
No.
They did not. And they told us it wasn't a viable option. Right now, it has the ability to house almost 600 people with beds, kitchen facilities, bathroom facilities, showers, medical facilities, demo facilities, and office for administrative and resources like mental health resources, disability resources, veterans' resources. It has the ability to do all those things, and all our county and city politicians and elected officials have to do is give the okay, give some of that money that's been going to the wayside down that black hole that we haven't seen, and be able to give that money to do something as a viable option. That doesn't mean Wapato is the solution, but it is one solution and it is one option. And if you can take 600 people off the street, give them the resources they need, start to have them, the ones who want to get off the street, but the ones who need to get off the street, give them viable resources to have a positive off-ramp so that they're not in this vicious cycle of moving from block to block to block, overpass to overpass to overpass, doorway to doorway to doorway, then we can start saying, "We're doing something to help resolve this problem." Doesn't mean it'll ever go away. Homelessness has been around since the dawning of time. Since the dawning of time. But this is the United States of America. We can put people in outer space for months and months and months at a time to live. Why can we not find housing for those who need it and want it? Why can't we not find solutions for those who need it and want it? And we are not doing that right now. And it's our elected officials that aren't listening. And we, as the people who pay taxes, who roll up our sleeves every day and go to work, our voices need to be heard. And the way our voices are heard, I know they hold city council meetings at 10:00 on Wednesdays while most of us are at work. And they hold county meetings on Thursdays at 10:00 when most of us are at work. We have to demand that our local politician, our elected officials have these meetings when we can go to them. Come to our neighborhoods. Why have they had this neighborhood association meeting right today? Listening to the taxpaying citizens in the Lance area and all over the city. Why are they not here? They will cook the books and they will tell you about numbers and how many people a house. And we're not stupid. Everybody here, you drive to work, you drive downtown, you drive to the movie theater, you drive to the supermarket, and what you see. You see what was worse than it was five, 10, 15 years ago.
Until last year.
Last year. And these numbers are numbers that come from clean and safe. This is not just, this is just one area of the city. This is not the whole city. The RVs that have broken down are biohazards. Marine Drive, I drive down there every morning, and you see RVs broke down, tents up. And people say, "Well, Wapato's too far away", but they'll post up on Marine Drive. We have to have viable resources for those people who want them. And for those who don't want them, and those who want to break the law, we have to have enforcement. We can't, we can't just enable people to break the law. But we have to give them viable options so that they don't break the law. And those who want to break the law have to be able to be dealt with. So. I'm here to answer questions. I'm here to figure out what we need to do.
Um, so, speaking to, I don't know if Randy came, Tyke came in.
He did not.
Speaking, we met with him last week, and he was saying one of the big problems is that is people want to blame cops because there's a situation, they feel like cops aren't doing their job. But the problem is they take them to Inverness Jail or wherever, and they get released right away because we have a whole section of Inverness Jail that's closed off and is not being ran, and they say that they don't have money for that. However, so, the issue is that, and you know, Daryl, that we've done our research on this stuff, is that it's not a police issue so much as it's a county issue. And the county is sort of, you know, getting a pass on this because everyone wants to blame the police for it, but, you know, that would, that would open up a lot of possibilities. I mean, we talk about these people, these situations where this man punches this 90-year-old woman in the face, assaults her, breaks her jaw, they take her, they take him down to the, you know, be booked and everything. He's released the next day. I mean, it's just, why is the county not, not meeting the need? I mean, what, what, what do they say about this?
And I can't speak for the whole county. I can speak for as many possibilities. When you go to, a lot of times we take people to jail, obviously they have what they call a matriciding system. And if they fall into that matriciding system where they can get released in two hours or three hours or four hours, that is, that is what happens. It's not always recog either. It's just sometimes they just release them. They cite them and say, "You go to court on a certain date", and that's it, and they're back out on the street. But it's the same thing if somebody's going through a mental health crisis and a good citizen calls in and says, "911, I see this guy going through mental health crisis, so I'm 72 inflamed out". Police show up, we think he's a danger to himself or others because he's out in the middle of the street, traffic and everything like that. We take him down to, to a hospital. We take him to one of the emergency rooms because that's the only place they have for people. And guess what? They know the magic words, "I'm not going to hurt myself or anybody else", and in two hours, they're back out. But now they're miles away from where we took them from, in the middle of the night at 2:30 in the morning, and we have to, they have to walk back in the dark and the rain to their stuff that has gone now. And so, number one, they're pissed off. Number two, the next time the police come and they see Officer Brown again, they say, "Oh, no, oh, no, this is going to be a fight today" because last time he took me at 2:30 in the morning, and it took me till 5:30 to get back. Or they just post up in another doorway, in another yard, another underpass, and guess what? Then they're back out there again, and that vicious cycle starts again. There's not a resource. A place like Wapato or someplace like that that's large, you can take them to, you can get them clean clothes, you can completely have them take care of their hygiene needs, and guess what? If not that night, the next morning, you can get them some of the resources that they need to start them on the path to getting where they need to be.
Are they held there? I mean, like, I mean, they can leave voluntarily?
They can leave voluntarily. It's going to be a, it's not going to be a thing where you're held there like...
But they're given all the things they need.
They're given all the things they need and a wraparound resources. I hate to use the word, but it's kind of like, it would be like a Fred Meyer. All your resources in one place where people could go and...
And the people really want help.
And the people who really want help can get that help. Yes, sir.
Has there been a credible study done of what it would cost to refit this? One. Two, has anyone addressed that the original deed owner has put in there that cannot be used as a residential property? So right now you've got a problem with the deed that says it can't be used residentially, and we don't know how much it actually costs to do it, or is this just campaigning?
So first, first off, the city of Portland can enact emergency ordinances. Every Wednesday they have those city council meetings at 10:00 down at State Hall.
Yeah, but they're not the Portland Portland.
They're not the Portland Portland, but they can do that. They could act emergency ordinances to make it a, say like, right now, if they decide they want to make emergency shelters. So they have to deal with the Portland Portland, I understand this, and it has to be, has to be collaboration in there. They, they're still doing studies on how much it would cost to actually reopen it, Wapato, for the amount of people, 500 and or 600 people they can fit in there right now. They guesstimate, it is a guesstimate, about $5 to $10 million to totally get everything back up and running the way it should be. They took all the beds out of there, so it's open bed, so to bring all the beds back in there. But in the last five years, the county, the city of Portland has increased the funds for homelessness 60% in the last five years. There's not a bureau in this city that has done that in the last five years, anywhere in the whole city. No bureau has done it in the city, increased their budget by 60%.
And no effectiveness.
So you talk about hundreds of millions of dollars increase for homelessness, and we're where we're at today. Your neighborhoods are where they're at today because of livability issues dealing with people who are experiencing homelessness. The off-ramp for success is not there. And it's not the social service workers who do the work. We're not, I'm not blaming them. It's the failed and flawed policies of the people who are supposed to be good stewards of our tax dollars that are causing this problem. And they continue to tell us, they give us these stats, they give us these numbers, and if Daryl is housed on January 1st, if I'm housed on January 1st, if I'm homeless and I'm housed on January 1st, guess what? I am housed for the home year of 2018, even though I might be out on the streets on January 2nd for the rest of the year. They are cooking the books on us. And so, to answer your question...
So they have to count everybody every day?
Huh?
Do they have to count everybody every day?
They don't have to count everybody every day, but when they tell you, "We've housed 5,000 people this year..."
It could have been one person.
You're looking at, you're looking down, you're looking around the city and say, "Did we get 5,000 more then?" So, yes, ma'am.
It's only a comment, but I just wanted to say that Loretta Smith did come to one of our meetings and would talk about Wapato. She took the time to come here, so.
And she was the only county commissioner who voted not to sell Wapato, and she got called a name.
Yes.
I don't want to go into that, but... So...
They'll haul on buses and haul them over there to the parking lot and drop them off and say, "There now, it's your problem."
Well, yeah, we could do that, but I don't think, I don't think it would work. I think that, you know, never before would go back where she lives at near Re College, and the mayor would go back to southwest Portland, and, you know, and, and so, you know, they're not coming down to Lance and talking to the people who live here. They're not going to the rest of East County. East County is almost being treated like unwanted stepchild. And that's got to stop. That's got to stop. But it's all over the city of Portland. It's not just East County. It's all over the city of Portland. So, and that's your tax dollars, my tax dollars in this county and this city that are going towards these things that are going in the black hole. So what we're doing, we're going around the neighborhood association meetings with other organizations. We want to sit down and talk, and you know what? Viable options. If anybody has viable options, we're, we're willing to listen, but we have to stop these failed policies, these failed programs. We have to be able to have a positive offer for people who are experiencing homelessness, addiction issues, mental health issues, and we have to be able to give them a viable, good option to get out of here and, and start productive lives again. And we're not doing that. We have to stop enabling people who are committing crimes, and not only committing crimes in our neighborhoods, they're committing crimes in the homeless population too. And the people in the homeless society are not calling the police, and the reason they aren't is because they have to live in that situation, and they know that there's no relief for them. So why call the police and make trouble for themselves?
And they're laughing at us because they know they're not going to get locked up?
Or not for long. Yes, ma'am.
Well, you're talking about how, you know, you can't come in, you can't get into the jail, can't open that side of the jail that's closed around more people who come in, give a little bit of a little bit of net, so these people aren't just going back out on the street.
Well, this is the problem is...
I understand, I understand this problem and, you know, and everything, but everyone has to agree. You come upon the same people over and over.
Over and over and over again.
You have to agree, some people are getting, the police department, or one of your people that is out there.
The county runs the jails, so the county runs the jails with your county funds. Those county funds come, guess where they come from? The county city commissioners who sit there, who sit and make the budgets up for, for the county, for the county jail, as well as for, for Moona County. So they're the ones who make the budget of it. If they don't give you enough of your budget to open up the sections of the, of the jail facilities or staff it, Wapato's a perfect example. They bought it, they built it, they couldn't staff it. There was no budget to staff it, so they never staffed it. If they don't do that, then you can't put, you can't keep people longer in jail. And, and really, some of the crimes that they, that we cite people for or take people for to jail, what if we gave them a viable option? What if we said, "You know what? They opened up Wapato", and guess what? You have an option if you, if you got low-level trespass, drinking in public, maybe low-level drug offenses. Hey, we'll tell you what, because this is what's going to happen. If you go to court, the judge is going to find you. You can't pay the fine because you're homeless. If you're on drugs, the judge is going to say, "Okay, you need to be in this program", and you're going to have to go to this program. But guess what? You're back out on the street. What if you didn't go to Wapato, have housing, have resources, and go through the program, and if you stay there, it all gets, it all just washed out when you're done. They have a thing, and I don't know if they call it, they used to call it Stop Program.
Right.
You have to be in it for a whole year. If you made it through the whole year, they, they took care of, they washed your record clean. If you made it that whole year. So why not, if you go to Wapato, if that's a viable option, you're getting the rehab you need, you're getting the mental health issues you need, you're getting the health care, dental care, as well as whatever, a place to put your head and be dry and be clean and warm and get fed?
And that's all it pays, that's all it pays.
Right.
You know, like, yeah.
Right. But that, it is, it's only one solution, it's only one option, but our, our local officials are so hung up on their egos that what they're not doing is saying, "That's a viable option."
So that, so your suggestion for us to be able to change this is to bomb the city hall? Or not, not like that?
So, so both our commissioners, both our county, both our county commissioners and city commissioners need to hear your voices. And I don't know if, if everybody takes a day off from working those out there on a Wednesday at 10:00 and a Thursday at 10:00, or if everybody says, "You know what, Mr. Mayor, county commissioners, you need to come to our neighborhoods. You need to come and see what, what our neighborhoods have been like, what they've become with the trash, with the RVs that are broken down, with some of the crime that we have, with the door, the business doorways smelling like urine, and, you know, piles, piles of feces that are here and there or different places, and the needles that are around in our parks where our kids play, where we recreate and things like that. Come, come to our neighborhoods, sit in our neighborhood association meetings. You city council, Mayor Wheeler, Amanda Fritz.
Try going to the needle exchange and asking for a Sharps container. You have to meet them on the street to get it. The addicts have more than I, like, more access to things.
Right. Like I said...
I'm asking for Sharps, but I can't pick up those needles that are at the park, so my son can put them outside. Yeah.
So, yeah, so those are the...
I'm asked to go this corner.
This is not an indictment on people that are living through homelessness. It's an indictment on our elected officials using our tax dollars, and they're not using them wisely, and they continue to use failed policies and processes that are that, that negative turnaround that we keep seeing the same people out there every day. For 20 years, I've seen some of the same people. Am I 27? I've seen them. I've seen them. And they haven't had viable ways to get out of the lifestyle that they're in because they're not there. This is not an indictment on the people who are, who are on the ground, who are on the ground offering the resources. These are the people who are saying, "This will work, and we're going to put millions and hundreds of millions of dollars of your money into it", and when it doesn't work, then they go, "Oh, well", they, they give you stats.
Oops. Were you stabbed and asked for that money?
And they ask for more money. We have an affordable housing bond that's on, that'll be on the ballot this, this, uh, this fall, November. And I believe they want $680 million or $580 million from the taxpaying citizens to be able to build affordable housing. Affordable housing, but also what they're saying is, they're looking to, in a metro county area, to only, to house about 3,900 people. 3,900 people in a metro area. We're not talking about just the city of Portland, we're talking about a metro area. In over a six to eight year period. Do you know what it'll be like in six to eight years?
Another 3,000.
Oh, crap. Detroit.
So we have to do something different. And it has to be the taxpaying citizens, it has to be the people that don't get heard, that don't go to the city hall, and, and because they work, because they're busy, because they're doing those stuff, we have to figure out a way to get down to city hall. We have to figure out a way because if we do not, it gets worse. Now, I'm not just saying this because I'm a Portland police officer. I've given 27 years of my life to the city of Portland and public service. These gentlemen are giving time from their, their time. That's our job. We do it for a reason.
We appreciate it.
You know, firefighters in here, they do the same thing. They give their time too. They give their careers too. They love the city. They enjoy working here, and that's why we're here. Even though we hate politics, we enjoy the city. So that's why we're here every day trying to do what we think is the right thing to do, which is our job, is to facilitate resources to help people to make their lives better, and guess what? To maybe make their, even their day better.
Can I just say, "Hey" is a strong word. "Dislike" is a weak one.
Excuse me?
Can I just say, "Hey" is a strong word, and you can say "dislike" is a weak one.
Dislike is a weak.
But, um, back to, so, if, I'll be honest, I would get down to city hall more than once.
But if you're not working, it's...
I'm so young. I went in on a meeting with some people, before your daddy was there. Brother Eber and I, we all brought up, no, you know what? We'd love to see Wapato open. Activists were against it at first, but we all need something.
Right.
I mean, it's, it's heartbreaking things for me. This is where I was born and raised, and I don't see the things that people are seeing. And it's really hard to, because one thing, we called the police, you have nowhere to take them, so you know what? A lot of us won't call the police. You know, or, we know they're busy over a shooting at Walmart, you know? I mean, this is, it's a thing that, you know, our residents are going, "What the hell did we do?", you know? You know, and you say go to the city, but then.
Porti County.
Yeah.
And County. Excuse me? No, go ahead. Okay, it'll, it'll take a lot of agencies to work together. Trynet would be one of those agencies that would work together. So say two thirty in the morning, say the Grand Scheme, Polyanna, whatever you wanna call it, the Grand Scheme down the road. Wapato is opened up as a facility for people who wanna go there. Officer Turner gets. I don't know. But, uh, but Officer Turner picks up somebody at two thirty in the morning. They don't, they don't have any place to go. They're in somebody's doorway or under somebody's porch or whatever it may be. Hey, I'm gonna take you to Wapato. You'll get a dry place, you'll get a clean place, you'll get clean clothes. They'll sanitize your clothes for you. And then at the end of the day, if the next morning you decide you wanna walk away or take a bus out of there, you're free to go. But if you wanna stay there and get the resources that you may need to, for whatever, for whatever you need them for, for disability services, addiction services, mental health. Yeah, you, you can get those tomorrow.
Yeah.
And as you have people stay and as you have people be successful, you'll have more people come in.
Successful by?
Successful means by they're starting the road to recovery, whatever it may be. And also down the road, it's transitional housing. You can stay for a longer periods of time, so it's not the twenty four hour, forty eight hours.
To that point where they're successful, they get the innovation and be successful.
Excuse me?
Who can aspire to, to get to that point?
The, the same sort of resources that are around here, but they're all in one place.
But they wanna be covered and they wanna be on the street.
Well, that's, that's their choice, but then they have to deal with the ramifications of. If they commit crimes that.
I like what we do is that, you know, make sure that, you know, go out there, get part, be a part of the homeless system.
Somewhat, somewhat. But as, we also have an obligation to, to try our best, uh, to rehabilitate people who have addictions because, uh, for me personally, my family have had two people, two people die from addiction.
That man would say they spend a lot of money. I mean, I've heard you about talking a lot of, um, you said that stuff, talking a lot about policymakers, uh, police officers and, and union presidents. What's your role in politics?
Politics? No role in politics. I'm the union president.
Okay. You see Wapato as an issue right now, it's a political hot issue.
Well, it is a political hot issue, but also we're frustrated as law enforcement officers of taking people to jail or having no place to take them.
I appreciate that.
We're, we're frustrated. That's our job is to, to avail resources to people who need them, no matter who they are. Whether they live on the street or whether they're the CEO of the biggest corporation in the city of Portland or anywhere else. Our job is to avail resources to anybody and everybody.
What's happening now? Just raise this, this policymakers?
Say, I'm sorry.
Why is it not happening right now?
Again, because we don't have, we don't have, we don't have the resources to be able to do it. We don't have the resources to take somebody someplace, to give them a place to sleep for that night and give them that option to stay there and get the long-term resources they need. That's a successful offer. We don't have that right now.
We have a lot of property owners here.
Do we have another voice in the air?
Yeah, let's, let's move on. Let's move on.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to say from personal experience, I like a lot of natural areas where I go for Watson Heights and stuff. So I was out there years ago, twenty years ago, that natural area that's right next to Wapato. And it's not that far from other connected places. It's just right down below St. John's, just like that. You're on St. John's Bridge down on US thirty. You go down Marine Drive, boom, the convention center, you've got Max Connection. It's not that far away, so don't let anybody tell you that. And with regards to testifying and taking these appointed and elected leaders on, which you gotta remember this, basically what they do is they drink the Kool-Aid, build the wall and feather their nets. They're running for election, they put, give me the peace sign, they get elected, there's one finger sticking up. So they generally, they get in office and they deal in a silo situation. They only wanna involve themselves in something that they can control. That's why they aren't going outside of it and working together on something like Wapato. And let me say this really quick, just that you go, go sign up with the city, you gotta do it sometimes two months ahead of time. You go to the county, you sign up that morning and you do testify. And when you testify, be bright, be brief, be gone, and always sip a little water because everybody gets nervous. That's it. I've made changes, not.
Is this sustainable? It seems very expensive. Let's see people who have to walk, they wanna go. Housing people like in government justice, there's something they don't wanna go. What is this due to property values, uh, property values? Is this the best way that we could be putting this human energy to?
This is not the only. What we're saying, what we're saying is this is not, this is not the only solution. It's not the only solution and only option, but it is one solution and one option that we have not used, that we could use and that we paid for. That's, that's all I'm saying. This is not the only option. We're not saying Wapato is a get all, it'll be all. That's not what we're saying. It's one option and it's a solution that we can use to lean on, which the perfect, perfect example, the, the Unity Center that they opened up, uh, for people in mental health crisis. They use their policies, they use their programs, they use all their stuff. Look where it's at now. Even the people who worked there, even the people who worked there are upset of the way it's run.
And Darryl, if, if I'm, if I'm right, I think you told us about a site that they wanted to use that was downtown and it's gonna cost them twenty million dollars to refurbish. And that was gonna, that was gonna house fifty people.
That was me.
That was you? Okay.
So, so downtown, one building, three million dollar purchase, twenty million dollar remodel. Um, and.
Houses fifty people.
That's four hundred and twenty five thousand. I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
And you can spend five to seven million dollars and have, and house immediately within, what did you say, ninety days?
Ninety to one hundred and twenty days, yeah. So anyway, we're just here to spread information and to get in, input and get ideas also. Uh, but we are, we want to be able to have a, a, a push and an effort to let our local, uh, uh, county and city officials know that there's options out there, there's solutions out there that they are not exploring. And whether it be because they have their own agendas or whether it be because of their egos, that needs to change and we need to change it.
So if I'm understanding correctly, Wapato is in private, we, we've sold that property.
We have sold that property.
I've been giving all that money into it.
Right. We sold it and.
So we can have it buy at that?
No, Jordan Snitzer, the, the, the man who bought it, uh, uh, his company bought it, is willing to make it a homeless shelter, but he needs help from the city for the code. Obviously you need help from the port now that we just found out, uh, not too long ago. And, uh, he would like to make it a homeless shelter because even though he could tear that whole place down and make it, uh, storage places or whatever it may be warehouses, but it's gonna cost him a lot of money to do that too. So he's gonna get his money back out of it when right now he can, he can, he can have that facility used for something else. Don't have to tear it down, put a whole much less money into it. And obviously he has more money he can never spend, so it also adds to part of his legacy.
But it's only, it's only a temporary housing. It's not permanent.
No, it would, well, it's eighteen acres, so there's, there's, uh, you can, you can expand on that. You can grow on that and actually make it, uh, like the Harbor of Hope, I believe they call it, San Antonio, Texas, where they built, they built a facility there for long-term housing. None of it's gonna be forever housing, but long-term housing where people can stay there a year or two years as they get the resources they need and get back on track to get, to be ready to go back into, uh, low, low, low-cost housing all, all over the city.
So, I'm sorry, I might lose one of you that apologized.
No, no.
So if, if there is transitional housing there, um, how would it, how would the police enforce those that are in drug rehabilitation?
Well, that's what I mean, if you go to court, but if I'm a driver, I'm a driver as a user. And I go to court, the judge is gonna say, Darryl, you have to be in this stop program or whatever program for say a year. If you, if you fail that program after a year, then your felony conviction stays. If not, uh, it goes away if you, you complete that program. But what they.
How do you enforce that?
But the same way you enforce that, the status stop program. You stayed in a program, you have to show up at the meetings, you have to be there, you have to participate, you have to take U A, all that stuff that the judge enforces already. The difference is the stop program the judge enforces doesn't give you place to live. You'll still be back out on the street, so you're still in that same environment with the same people who maybe not, are not trying to get themselves clean, who are not trying to fight their addiction. Where you're gonna be in a place where you're dry, you're clean, you're able to fight your addiction and you're able to get the resources you need and food and clothing and all the other health resources that you need to be able to be successful. People, people will relapse. We understand people will relapse. It's not the relapse, it's how fast you recover from your relapse. So we get that part too.
Yeah, I just, I just am seeing like people in rehab versus those that just need an actual place to live and all that with.
Well, there's sections of, there's sections of Wapato that you can, you can section off. But you still have all the resources, you have administrative offices that can provide the resources. Some people in addiction also have mental health issues, may have disability issues, maybe, uh, dis, disabled veterans. So you can have all those resources to take care of all the needs instead of one need and go different places all over the city like many people have to do right now.
What we do now?
Yes.
What we do now? I mean, we're talking about something that's impactful and the potential future, which, um, what policymakers, if you don't trust, if they're in office, they come through and what we can even have?
As, as taxpayers and as citizens here.
Sure. Or as, as, you know, union police president, uh, uh, PBA Association president, you know, yourself, what do you recommend?
Well, I don't, I'm not, I'm not here as a PBA president or a union president. I'm here, I'm here as another taxpaying citizen in Multnomah County, uh, who cares, who cares about the city and cares about the county.
Beautiful. And so, you know, if you, if you have a suggestion and it's because you, are you on a shirt and a head on today, isn't it?
No, we're not. This is me talking to a neighborhood association I agree to come and talk to. And, and I'm just saying there are viable options, the solutions out there that we need to explore and we need to tell our elected officials and push our elected officials to explore.
I think you started to make the point where you said something about the individual and I think that is a really important note there. The individual has to wanna change.
Correct.
The individual has to wanna get up every day like we get up every day, go to work and make changes.
Exactly. This is not about enabling, and I said, this is not about enabling, it's about empowering people to be able to do those things.
So, so how do we put more emphasis on making that individual want to be successful?
So.
Build them up.
Yes, give them the resources. I understand that.
Part of the, part of the idea is that if someone is arrested for, let's say they're dealing drugs, it's a low-level crime, so, and they're homeless. So you. Can I, can I continue? And they give them the option, you either go to Wapato or you go to jail. So in those situations, I mean, that's one idea, right? I mean, I'm saying.
Right, but also people who volunteer to go there. Once you start giving the resources they need and build their self-esteem, some people will leave, but their lion's share will stay because they want the resources, they wanna be able to do it. And that, and once you get people wanting to be able to do it, just like anything else, people will see the value in it and it will start to come. You'll always have that percentage of people that wanna live on the street and that's the people you'll deal with with enforcement and other ways. But the lion's share of those people don't wanna be where they are. They just don't have the resources, number one, the resources and then build up the self-esteem to be able to do that. And that gives you a place where you don't have to go day to day from Wapato. You can stay there for a year, you can stay there for, you know, it, it's, it's, uh, it's like I said, it's just ideas, it's not the solution to all of it. But it's a optional idea that we have not used and it's inexpensive that we are letting, we let go to waste. So, yes, sir, you had your hand up, I'm sorry.
I'm a guest here, I don't wanna take up too much time, but usually when I go to meetings like this, there's a certain segment of the population that comes and they say something like that we all, nobody wants to criminalize need, but there are some, there, but we are criminalizing choices. This is my opinion. I just wanna make sure that this, that, I wanna get your answer to this.
Say that again, ma'am.
There, there are some, there, we're criminal, we don't wanna criminalize need, but we are criminalizing choices. Like the choice to live outside and to work things out until I figure out whether or not I wanna live inside.
No.
So they want, so we want, we're criminalizing the choice to use drugs, we're criminalizing the choice to live on city property, we're criminalizing the choice to, to live in, on ODOT land. We're criminalizing those choices. And so I just wanna hear, is this part of our future? Are we gonna have to accept this because there are people that are pushing really hard for this?
Criminalizing, no, we're not talking about criminalizing. What we're talking about is options. People have options, but those options, it's just like anything else.
Well, what you said, what you said, I'm sorry, you said that there are gonna be people that don't want to go to, to Wapato. They don't want to.
Right.
To be in a house. And, and the way that we deal with that is with law enforcement.
No. If they're committing crimes, if they're committing crimes, then we deal with it in enforcement. I didn't say, just in general.
Okay.
If they're committing crimes, we deal with it in enforcement. Because like I said, it's not just general society. There are people within the homeless community that are being victims of crime.
Yeah.
Who won't report those crimes because guess what? They don't have a place to stay. They don't have anywhere else to go, so they have to live in that community. They're not gonna poison themselves in that community by calling the police. This gives them a viable option and a safe haven too. So. Anyway, I know we're gonna run into other people's time, I don't wanna do that. Um, Angela has some, she can hand out the, the numbers to the city council members. Um, and what we can do is, uh, we'll send out an email to the, the neighborhood association here, uh, with information about how it's going with other associations and moving forward with this. But I just wanted to come and just kinda talk to people here, cause I know, I, I, that you're valuable citizens of the city and you want to at least know about the solutions and the options. And get your input also, because as we speak to other neighborhood associations and organizations, we wanna be able to talk about the input we got from you. But we're not talking about criminalizing homelessness. We're talking about viable offerings, sus- successful solutions and options that we're not looking, that the city that are elected officials are not looking at for whatever reasons.
Options should inspire people and give, uh, and, and, and should put back into the community and, and, um.
Yes. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Like I said, I'd be back passing the hat. So if you've got a little piece of paper there and you wanna tell us what you wanna donate and how we can bring it and pick it up, throw it in the hat and we'll come pick up your cranberry sauce, olives, whipped cream, pie, we need pie, everybody wants pie. Just in case, anybody down here with an envelope, last chance, well, till eight twenty or so and I'll be back. Hang on here a minute, I'm coming, I'm getting some assistance here. Okay, that nice man's taking care of that. Okay. Yeah, if you wanna throw some cranberry sauce or something our way, give us a holler. They didn't think I'd pass the hat. Should've known better, I wear one. Sir? Okay. All right, now I'm gonna give it back to David, we'll get back to the serious stuff. Thank you.
Okay, we're, we're ready to move on to Metro's section of the, the meeting, so.
Thank you.
Can you guys hear me if I talk without the lights? I'm a little more comfortable standing up and being a little more natural like this. My name is Dan Blue, I work for Metro and I'm here with Hila Ritter and Will Ennis. Um, I'm a policy specialist, I helped Metro with solid waste code issues and licensing issues. Hila is our authorizations coordinator, so she handles the application process for licensing solid waste facilities. And Will is our inspector. He's out, uh, in the field visiting up to forty or up to forty facilities a year and inspecting them for standards. So thank you very much for letting us be here tonight. Um, what we're gonna do is talk a little bit about where we are today in terms of licensing the West Rock facility as well, as well as five other, um, material recovery facilities in the region. We're also gonna talk about where the application process is right now, Hila will cover that. And then, um, Will is gonna talk a little bit about the inspection process itself. So I know a lot of you are hardcore recyclers, right? Hands up? Yeah, okay. Most people in Oregon like to recycle. We've been doing it for thirty years now and I wanna talk a little bit about how we got here. Thirty years ago, when we sent out our recycling at the curb, it was mostly newsprint and we bundled it up and put it on top of our garbage can. And then as time advanced, we started to, um, uh, organize our recycling collection systems. And we have ended up with a system today where we put everything in a big roll cart. That's a big change from the old days. Because in the old days, all that newspaper showed up at a facility as a big pile of newspaper. Now it's completely mixed with a hundred different items in those roll carts. So to back up a little bit, when we formed our, our solid waste authorization system, we exempted the facilities that accepted clean recyclable material from the curb because they really didn't need, uh, Metro oversight and authorization. Today, a lot of things have changed. I mentioned the roll cart change. The other big thing that's changed is that in the old days, most of what you put out of the curb was a newsprint. How many people get the newspaper delivered to their house today?
Everybody.
I have a couple.
Yeah, that's what I'm. So the material in the carts has completely changed from just five or ten years ago. That's another big change that's happened. The other big change is that, um, we've seen some facilities not be really great neighbors. And we've seen some material issues with litter and we've seen some issues with material handling where the recyclables that you set out of the curb may not be managed properly by that facility. All of these changes have led Metro in the last few years to take a look at requiring these facilities to be licensed by Metro, inspected by Metro, and be held to a certain set of standards that are meant to protect the communities that those facilities are in. So that's really where we are today. Over the last couple of years, I've led a really extensive stakeholder engagement process, working with, um, a whole broad group of people. And we came to the unanimous conclusion that it would be a good thing for Metro to authorize these facilities, remove that exemption from our code, and set up a, a, a group of administrative roles that will help govern the operation of these facilities. So that's where we are today. I led that process. Um, what it has led to is the six MRFs in the region have submitted applications to Metro to become licensed by Metro to, to continue operations. Hila's gonna talk about that authorization process here in a second. Um, the really good news for communities in the region is that these licenses will allow us to have something to enforce against. Whereas in the past thirty years, there's not been anything to enforce against. Our standards and our rules include things like noise reduction, litter reduction, vector control, odor control, traffic control, signage. control, odor control, traffic control, signage, material quality, and avoidance of degradation, material storage standards, these are all things that are written in the administrative rules that we can now enforce against. So, that's a little bit of background on kind of how we got to where we are today, and I know we're speaking primarily of the West Rock facility in the West's neighborhood. So, I'm going to turn it over to Hala to talk about where we are with the application process. I do want to make sure we leave some time at the end to answer questions and hear your feedback. So thank you for letting us be here.
Thanks for sharing. So, my name's Hala, thank you for having us here tonight. The applications for these six facilities that are coming under Metro authorization first time are all available online. So if you'd like to, if you haven't already had access to see them and to see what their operating plans and what their, the materials that they submitted to Metro look like, you can go to the Metro website, and there's, there's information there that you can have ready access to, to see what they've, what they've submitted. I was the one who sent out the postcards, and I think many of you may have received them, that advise you of the public notice period. So we are currently in a public notice period for West Rock and the other five facilities, and that public comment period goes until October seventeenth. So it's a written public comment, so if you have information that you would like to share with Metro, now is the time for you to do that, and we really encourage you. We've gotten some feedback so far and it's been very helpful to us, and so really my message is to say that I welcome your input and your feedback and the things that, that you've experienced and the things that you've seen, because that can help us inform how we write the license and what kinds of conditions we, we include. So, so thank you to those of you who have already submitted public comments, you can submit them to me via email or letters, I have business cards with me and, and you can connect if you need that information. And, and the last thing I'll say before I turn it over to Will is that we, you know, at Metro and with our group, we have, we have authority over the solid waste operation. So we can regulate the kinds of materials that they are accepting in a facility, how those materials are managed, and some of the things that Dan mentioned, and that's really, that's really our, our role and our area of expertise. So we work in cooperation with the other government agencies, the city, the county, DEQ, and all of the other folks, but we're the ones that are, are responsible for overseeing the solid waste operation, so the, the materials they accept and how they manage them on-site. So if you have comments and suggestions about how those things can be managed and how they can be handled, you know, to, to maintain and improve the livability of your neighborhood, that's, that's the type of feedback that is really helpful to me, and so I just wanted to share that with you, thank you.
How about the amount that they are able to accept based on the size of the facility? Is that also a concern? Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Hi, good evening, my name is Will Ennis, I'm one of Metro's two solid waste facility inspectors. We regulate or have contractual arrangements with more than sixty solid waste facilities, most here in the Portland metropolitan region. My responsibility post-January first, when these, this new class of facilities is regulated by Metro, will primarily be to conduct, conduct unannounced inspections so that we can make sure that the facility's operating in according to the standards of the license and we get a snapshot of daily operation. So, these inspections will not be announced, I will show up on-site, I will observe conditions outside of the facility, including litter, noise, traffic, and then I will go into the facility, announce myself, and then walk around with the operator. I will attempt to work collaboratively to correct any issues that I observed during the inspection. That's, technical assistance is what we prefer to do before going to enforcement, but Metro does have an enforcement arm, which includes civil penalties, it could be additional design requirements that the operator would be responsible for completing.
I have a question, I know you're not the Department of Transportation, and I know I have to take this up with them. That picture right there behind you, that of course is when they were taking care of the plastic fire on December sixteen, two thousand seventeen, however, I talked to the Department of Transportation for the state of Oregon, they specified specifically that the heisters and the loaders do not have permission to travel on the streets, city streets. In our neighborhood especially, it's the only facility on the west coast, the city neighborhood, that West Rock owns. And they've destroyed our livability, but does anybody know the answer? Is it, is it really, I mean, do I have, what do I have to do? Do I have to contact the Department of Transportation for the state of Oregon again? And maybe get them to collaborate with you about that?
That's a great question, and that's something that I don't know if either of you know the answer to.
I don't know the answer, but traditionally with the facilities that are already under Metro regulation, we work with our regulatory peers, like the DEQ, DOT, the Stormwater folks, so, once this is in place, January first, we probably will be reaching out to the, like, those agencies and forming relationships with them.
And I'll, I'll find out the answer to that question before the end of the public comment period, which is?
October seventeenth.
October seventeenth, so.
Thank you, because I was told by the Department of Transportation for the state of Oregon, that I would probably be able to submit pictures because if there's a heister or a loader on the street, or a truck out in front of my house, they're going by kind of pockets here, so I would be willing to, able to submit pictures.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up. One of the things that are in the administrative rules is certain traffic controls, and it specifically mentions not parking in front of a neighbor's driveway or along that residential street, so that's definitely one of the things that we're looking at. Yes, sir?
Solid waste, you said that some, under solid waste, is one of the items that comes under there is like recycling microwave ovens?
Yes, solid waste includes compost, it includes yard debris, it includes recyclable materials by its state definition, so yes.
Let me share this with you, I lived like a hundred and second at Stark, so there used to be a facility down like Hundred Twenty Second in Sandy, that apparently it's not open anymore and not functional, and I think you used to be able to take a microwave oven there. And I've been there before, that's why I knew where it was, but then I call up Barb, you know, she's great, so, the assistants are, and they tell me where I can take this microwave oven, so I go to Hundred Twenty Second in Sandhurst out. And I go in there, and nothing's intuitive, nothing's customer-oriented, the signage is off, I have to park, shut the car down, go into that trailer there, and they didn't like it that I went in there to ask them questions. You can see, I'm looking down this long thing, and all these big trucks, and it's really narrow, and I thought, you know what? I'm not doing this. And you're always thinking your options, I thought, damn, I'll just take this thing apart and throw it bit by bit in the garbage, that's what you drive us to if you don't set it up.
Period.
For the customer, you need to start thinking about the way to set up Metro is more orientated to us out here and not you.
I appreciate that feedback. We're part of a, we're in the middle of a ten-year regional waste planning process, and we're hearing those kinds of feedback from communities around the region of making it more user-friendly. That's a private facility that you're talking about that, that is going to be regulated under the terms of this license practice, so I appreciate that feedback.
I, I want to validate what we said, I'm sorry, yeah, I'd rather actually have the paper on, Craig's supposed to come and get my microwave and do it.
Then deal with you to take it.
Oh, you're next, my name is Craig.
Thank you.
Any questions about facility regulation and oversight?
Are you wondering about hours of operation?
Hours of operation, absolutely, is something that we include in our oversight, and because of the, the unique position of that facility adjacent to the neighborhood, and that's the only one in the entire Metro region that has that problem, hours of operation are important.
I came by there at five minutes to nine last night, there was tractor, trailer, stage in front of the facility, and there was one on the street, not over in the staging area, and they weren't operating at five minutes to nine last night.
They operate till ten. There's loose equipment banging, dumpsters banging, the sweeper comes by at nine-thirties at night, I've asked them several times, could you please have the sweeper do his job before eight, before bedtime, somewhere around there, still comes by at nine, nine-thirty, and it makes several passes, and it's just, it's terrible. There's three neighbors with three houses.
Right there, fire.
That, the people go to bed at eight o'clock because they have to get up at four o'clock in the morning, they have to listen to this banging until ten o'clock at night, and you can hear it throughout the building, it's roused at night as well, and they have, how are they supposed to, how they're expected to perform their duty on their job on six hours sleep?
I have, I have eight, eight other neighbors here that have agreed with the same letter, they have the letter, read it to them with them, talked with them, had a chat, there's eight different neighbors, there were four or five, there were four or five more that weren't home at the time, I collect these, but they're also concerned, they're not here today, but.
Do we have a copy of that letter?
These are, yes.
Those are for you.
I'll walk across and pick it up. Thank you very much.
Very specific, they don't have it all over.
Appreciate that.
Some of them have emailed Metro, they saw that little card that was sent out, we appreciate that.
Great, great.
Your garbage is flowing on the square wall.
Yeah, I've seen, I've seen that for a long time.
I'm putting in the square wall, and I shouldn't have to pick up West Rock's garbage.
That's, that's one of the reasons we're doing what we're doing, and I want to, I think Hala mentioned it, but Metro's not responsible for the zoning, and it really, I think, and I think West Rock would fully agree with this, it was an unfortunate zoning decision to allow an industrial usage on one half of the street and residential usage on the other half. And we recognize that that is a real challenge, I know because I've spoken to West Rock at length about it, they recognize that it is a real challenge, and so I personally think this is a good opportunity for the community, for Metro, for the facility operator, to try to get on the same page about certain things that can be done to mitigate the impacts that we know are real, and we're not in any way disclaiming or trying to, you know, say you guys don't write about this, I hear it and I know it, and I've been in the industry for twenty-three years in the region, so I'm very aware of it, and I'm really excited about this opportunity to work in partnership with you guys and the facility and make this better for everybody.
And it's not like they haven't done anything, they have done some things to change, changed their side of the town, put some papers on the bucket, they are working to make it better, but it's been too long.
And they changed for a while and then things start sliding. When you have a staging area that scales over in an area that is industrial on the other side of the lawn, on the east side, you didn't see tractors in front of Renee's house. I didn't find them parked on a hundred, I didn't see them lined up in front of the facility, they were all being staged, but as, it's been what, eight months, nine months since we had that meeting with them?
Oh, last year, last year.
Some of us last summer, they came out, we had a meeting, this isn't going to happen, we're done, we're, we're.
The east is a dangerous area.
And for a while they were, but it is gradually coming back. I walked around seven, I was talking to the seven, but it always starts, I'm not helping, but eight o'clock in the morning, there's tractors in front of Renee's, they're on a hundred, they get lost going in there because it is a perimeter, and all the people, you might not climb out. But we've got tractor trailers running through the hood, trying to figure out how to get there.
Can I ask you a question about that street that separates their storage lot from their main building? How many residents use that on a daily basis?
That's the only light to get out of there.
So you have to go through that street to get to the lights?
And the neighbors, they'll try to go to Hundred and First and Foster, to get onto Foster safely, because the traffic just barrels by there. There's double-parked tractor-trailer rigs, they have to back out, you go out the back of the neighborhood without any lights, no safety.
I use it three or four times a day. If the fire running here and stuff, that's my way in and out, it was the safest way.
But you can't, you can double-park on top of one of the rigs.
But, again, they started out, okay, we're going to do this, we're going to be back. I noticed, David, this is Monday, I noticed Monday, they had knocked some bales over, which knocked the jersey barriers over, which knocked them on top of their fence, and then the fence out, one of, one of the bundles broke, and there was a whole bunch of garbage on the square wall. And I don't know, but yesterday it was still there. I didn't go out this morning.
It's unashamedly that a business grows, every business, I would hope, would grow because it's a business. But when you start out with a space the size that it is, and you start a business, and then you apply for a permit to put two more ducts in and keep all of your stuff outside now as opposed to in the building, whether, they're getting more and more and more stuff to where it gets overflowing.
And now that they're shredding, and they're shredding plastic, and they're just, they're using a heister and a scoop and dumping it over the fence into dumpster, into dump trucks, there is crap flying all over the place, the roadway is covered, now granted, sooner or later, eight, nine, ten o'clock at night, they'll sweep it up, but in the meantime, we're driving through there, and there's nuts and bolts, my lucky partner, by the time we get through our mile walk through there, he's probably got three pounds of nuts and bolts in his pocket that he's picked up out there, because they're tire dangerous. And I understand theoretically they need to get rid of this stuff, and I have noticed them shredding the way they are now. And, and it's been every morning, every morning we go by, and they're scooping shreds up into open containers.
So I'm, I'm also concerned that if they're at point to overflowing now, if the permit gives them the ability to also recycle, recycle other materials besides what they're doing, it's, it's just going to bring more in.
Yeah, the permit's not going to change the type of materials that, sorry, I'm going to call it a license because that's what it is, the license itself won't change the type of materials that they get. There is capacity language in the administrative rules that is somewhat subjective, it's essentially what can, what can that facility responsibly manage to avoid nuisance issues for the surrounding neighborhood? So if doubling their tonnage, their throughput on a daily basis, is going to increase the likelihood of litter or odor or vector or other fire, there, all of those things are in there, then we're going to say you, you got to cap your, your material flow at a certain point. So we have that language in there, it is, obviously it differs for every facility, so it doesn't say, can only accept fifty thousand tons a year. It's going to be, you know, unique to that particular facility, but it's in.
And just a clarification on that, at this point, it's going to be administrative rules, and it's not something that is standardized language that's included in all of the facility licenses, so that's, I mean, this is a perfect example of why it's so helpful to get community feedback, because if that's something that is really important and valuable to you, that's something that we can learn and understand and we can consider as something that we could include in the license. So, if you look at, on Metro's website, if you go to the solid waste authorizations, the oregonmetro.gov/solidwasteauthorizations, you can see all of the Metro licenses that, for all the different sixty facilities that we'll refer to, that we have oversight over, and you can look through other facility licenses and see what the language looks like and see, you know, kind of similar things, what to expect. And different kinds of facilities have different kinds of requirements, and other similar-type facilities don't have, you know, tonnage caps or tonnage amounts.
Based on states, right? Based on.
Right, yeah, so that, that isn't something that is part of the current licenses, but it is in the administrative rules.
But I have a question, so if they're allowed to, if they're, get the permit to, or license to recycle metal and, and glass and plastic and all the rest of stuff, besides just cardboard that they've scaled down to now, which is still, their facility is not large enough to accommodate even the stuff that they have, or they wouldn't have heisters and loaders on the street all the time? Because they don't even have, we were told two years ago, we're going to, we're going to have a staging area for the trucks, we're going to have separate parking for the employees, we're going to have a fourteen-foot-high steel wall, none of this ever happened, we're going to have brand-new gates with privacy slats in them, never happened, it's supposed to happen last year, nothing like that happened.
Yes, so, this is really great feedback, and as Hala said, there's a set of administrative rules for all the facilities, there is the potential for special conditions depending on the physical layout of. Yes. So this is really great feedback. And as Hila said, there's a set of administrative rules for all the facilities. There is the potential for special conditions depending on the physical layout of every facility, their proximity to neighbors, and West Rock obviously is the closest to neighbors. Although Far West Fiber, those roads does have neighbors on their back lot as well. So there are, there is the opportunity to place some conditions on it. And so, yeah, this is really good feedback. I'd like to see if there's other folks that also have comments on this one.
Have you seen the photos that Renee sent me, right?
Yeah.
You've seen all those, yeah.
Just a few of the 5,000.
Oh, that's just a few.
That storm right there.
That storm right there when the street sweeper goes.
Yeah.
What was that?
This is recent.
Like three weeks ago, two weeks ago.
It's not raining. Yeah. They don't use a vacuum.
So.
We're sucking it in. I mean, I can taste it when I film it, you know?
I guess, I guess I would say there are opportunities for improvement and I know for a fact because we've spoken with West Rock facility operators that they agree. I know for example, you mentioned the wall and that I think there is a permit, they're currently waiting on a permit from the city of Portland for approval for a permit to actually build that wall.
They claimed, last summer when we met with them, that they had the permit and they were showing what money within June.
Yeah.
And it was in 2017.
Vice President told me, you're going to see that wall there in two weeks. Now, this was over a year ago. You're going to see that wall there in two weeks and we'll be drinking champagne together. And I said, oh, man.
Yeah, so I'm definitely feeling, feeling the need for some trust building.
Oh, this is.
And what's really, and I totally hear you. Like I'm, I'm hearing you in the heart, right? I get, I get it. What I really like about this is that we have an opportunity to sort of be both a regulator and also a broker in partnership with that facility and try to make these things happen that are being promised. There's a way for us to push that along so we can see some results.
We wouldn't have 5,000 or 6,000 photos of stuff we disagree with if there was no issue.
I wish we would.
I am absolutely not saying there's no issues. I'm hearing a lot of issues and I can see it. And honestly, when I, when I led this process to game supportive Metro Council and including facility operators, I used some photos from this facility and other facilities as evidence of a need for us to step up and do a little bit of additional regulation. And 13 people on that committee, including three facility operators, agreed unanimously that there should be Metro oversight. So they weren't there to say, no, 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 no. They were like, maybe it is time for us to do this. So I want you guys to have a little bit of a trust in our process and I think it's going to reap some benefits for the community. It's not going to happen January 1. It's going to take a little bit of time. But I want you to know that one thing that we are considering is potentially a shorter-term license while we work out this particular facility. Then maybe a facility that we heard zero complaints from neighborhoods that might have a longer license.
Well, never would neighborhoods have such a long.
Well, there is one that has a residential neighborhood right up against its back.
There's a couple. And I received a couple of comments and I've gotten comments from other neighbors that are next to other facilities.
No, what?
This facility is unique, absolutely.
That was that kind of.
There are others that have residential neighbors in very close proximity.
Why don't they just turn it around? That would solve 90% of the problems. They just turn it around, face it for the industrial area, not to the neighborhood. I don't get that.
Yeah, that's right.
Just one A of the thing. It would have been 20 years later.
I think, I think we would all agree that a different location would be better. Including, including the facility operator has said that, so. I, I think we can work on this. And like I said, it's not going to happen overnight, but we totally hear you.
There's not a trick to compensate the amount of truck production, even with just cardboard. Oh my God, if they start with other products, it's just going to start back at square one because there's going to be three times.
I tell you what, I want to take this opportunity. What we find in the recycling roll carts in the region should not be in the recycling roll carts. Folks are putting diapers and hoses, all kinds of things, you know, plastic yard toys. Please follow the instructions on the top of your roll cart, the instructions that are given after you by the city of Portland in your curbside or newsletter. Only put in the things that are supposed to be. Don't put those clamshells in there and don't put your plastic bags in there because you will help your own case by helping keep that material straight and clean so that they can manage it more effectively. So I just want to throw that out there.
I'm just supposed to inspect every load as it comes in, the truck pulls in, they open the doors.
Load inspection is something that's an administrative.
I hear glass and cans falling on the ground.
Yeah, and that's because people put a lot of glass in their curbside roll cart that should not be in their curbside roll cart.
Yeah, number five recycling. Do you guys take it in the afternoon?
So recycling, are you talking about curbside or the transfer station?
Yeah, it's not curbside. No, you can't.
No, number five is, I think.
So, so it goes by, it doesn't go by the number. It doesn't go by the recycling symbol. It goes by the size and the shape of the, of the item. So if it's a tub that is larger than six ounces, then it can go, that's clean, it can go in the recycling bin, a tub or a bottle.
But not on the.
So that, not the clamshells. And then the number's on the bottom and the little chasing arrow symbol does not mean that it's recyclable. It's the size and the shape of the actual item.
Yogurt tubs all the way up to five-gallon plastic buckets are included. Any bottle with the neck smaller than the base of the bottle is included. But you throw money away if you're putting your water bottles and your soda bottles and your beer bottles, that's mean, in the, your. 10 cents a bottle now, guys?
Yeah, I know, right? I'll give it to somebody.
Yeah, but that's like.
Big hill I live on, so I got to carry a whole roll cart out there and yellow thing.
So can we answer any other questions about this facility or our licensing process before we get you all out of here? Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
There was something on his website that said. There was a site on, on the LNLA site saying that the mayor would send a letter to people who are moving to Portland. So I was curious about it because someone said, would you do that? And I was thinking, you know, 50 cents for the postage and, you know, just a regular envelope and a letter. Well, here's what I got. $1.42 for this, the posting, not counting the envelope. And then this.
Oh, wow.
Why are they wasting money on this?
Gilding.
That's my point. Here's the letter.
Oh my God. This is way too fancy.
To me, this is, even to me, this is just ridiculous.
Five bucks.
It's the untidy way that the city is wasting money.
Well, untidy, this is not a meeting. And why are they sending all the 40? On the post, it's not a, not a, the envelope.
$1.42 just for the posters.
So then you like include the envelope. What it actually was like nowadays, bulk intensity. That's a joke. Did you get, yeah, picture what you're supporting?
I just wanted everybody to know there's just little things like this going on everywhere in the city. And the only way we can stop it is if we let everybody who's in there and start over fresh.
I just wanted to say, my name's Juanita Sworwood. I live in Lentz. I've lived here for a long time. I've also worked for the city of Portland. I'm retired from the city of Portland. I'm a homeowner here in Lentz. I have two other properties. I've never been to this meeting, but I used to run the Gateway, the Oregon City, I mean, the Gateway and the Lentz Urban Renewal Advisory Committee. So it's been five years out. I've been working for the city. I know what you're talking about, them wasting money. In my retirement years, I'm, I'm just really upset about what's going on in Lentz as a homeowner. And I wish I'd have said this while the police were here. I didn't want to overstep because I'd never been to your meeting. But Casey is also my neighbor. She has children and we live up on Harney Court, which is just past 92nd and Flavelle. And we're also photographers. We come from a long line of photographers on our street and we have amazing photos of what's happening in our area. And I'm really upset because I'm a grandmother, I'm a mother, and I'm also a mother on the street. And our children have to walk through this every single day. And I am fed up. And I wish I'd have said this while the cops were here because I, I really, I know they want to help us. But as a resident, I'm, I'm just upset and I'm to Lentz neighborhood, to different people that I've known, that I've worked with for years. And because I work for the city, I don't want to push the fact that I have worked for the city. But I'm a homeowner and I live in this area and I'm really fed up with it. And I, I want to be able to push the homeless, be held accountable for what they're doing. Our children have to walk through needles, prostitution. It's amazing what we've verbal abused. They approach our children and, you know, we can't do anything about it. It's just frustrating.
And now I'm being sued by a tow company for them covering it because the police couldn't.
Well, my neighbor has, up on 92nd, you've seen her house on the left side as you go past the storage company. She politely asked the homeless to leave. They came back and burned her shed down.
But that's one we removed.
We did the, we did the cleanup on that.
Yeah, and I went by, well, we have a big Harney Court neighborhood, you know, where we have our block party every year. And I went down there and she just says, I feel like, I appreciate you doing that, by the way. She said, I feel like I'm an island. I have nobody that really cares. And so, I don't know. I'm just here voicing my opinion because I'm really fed up with it. It almost makes me cry because.
I cry.
It's just, I can't even, I can't even drive down, chill tight. I can't even drive down in that area. It upsets me so bad. And I've worked for a lot of these officials and I've heard it on both sides. And quite frankly, I know what goes on behind the scenes. And Lentz is going to become a dumping ground if you guys don't stand up for yourselves. And it is a dumping ground and I don't know. I'm just, I'm here voicing my opinion because I am really upset. I care for the neighborhood. I have two other properties and my residence in this neighborhood and it's going down the tubes. I really feel for you guys.
Well, I.
So thank you for, thank you for that. And if, if you want to help, help us, get involved. We have enough also.
Keep coming out.
Keep coming back.
This gentleman over here, Stuart.
Calling out.
Keep coming to the meetings. Get your neighbors to come. You will never find a more caring, dedicated bunch of people.
Doers, yeah.
Casey, all of us on our street, we have formulated where we actually text one another. And as soon as the homeless, which they're back down there now by Johnson Creek, as soon as they come in, they start coming into our neighborhoods and stealing from us, going through our mailboxes. And Casey has young children and they have to walk by that. It's just not fair. So I don't know what you want to add to that.
You got to stop using that word, guys, because that's what they're doing to us. They keep telling us they're homeless.
They're not. They're.
They're not homeless.
They want to do what they want.
There are homeless people, but they are not.
So yeah, my kids having to walk by just makes me furious. And I am lucky enough to be able to just drive my kids to school. My husband and I are lucky enough. But there are many families that don't have that opportunity.
They wouldn't even stop at our street if they go up.
Yeah, so we, I petitioned for the public schools and they sent somebody out the day after, and 92nd was clear. There was one RV and the woman said, well, just make your kids cross 92nd, right there under the overpass. And I'm like, my daughter's in kindergarten, like, I can't, no. And so I went down to the transportation department for Portland Public Schools. And I mean, this was a six-month, six-month process. And they were just kind of like, yeah, well, a lot of people have to deal with the homeless, like, essentially, like, okay.
Where do you live, Jan? Was it, let me see.
Yeah. They don't care if you're in Lentz. They're like, okay, well, you're just the dumping ground.
But something that is infuriating is that it's happening so much that I feel like it's becoming none to some officials, police, you know? My sister went to Hawaii on her honeymoon and I dropped her off at the airport, drove her car back. Next morning, came out and her car was gone. Her car was stolen while she was on her honeymoon. And so we called to report it stolen and the police said, I'm sorry, you're going to have to call the home, or you're going to have to have the owner call. So my brother-in-law called from Hawaii and they're like, yeah, just go ahead and file a report online. Nobody wanted to know. Like, we had it on video. We had the person on video and they were like. And so they're like, yeah, just go ahead. It happens.
The guy who stole my truck had four felony records when he did it. And the police knew who he was.
But Vancouver Police found it in a day.
Yeah.
So.
In the state of, in the state of Oregon, in order to get a conviction on car theft, they have to confess. If they say, if they say you let them use it or somebody drove it by or their brother came over, that's it.
Anyway, we're, we're open to helping in a way. I used to work for the Portland Development Commission with the Department. I had worked in public outreach.
We're talking.
It's just something that I've been set up with.
We appreciate your input for sure.
Anything else? All right. Yes. I just wanted, I come from Oma.
Monona.
And I just wanted to, to thank you for letting us come here. And remind you that what is happening is that these neighbors, these neighborhoods that are concerned and are active are pushing these problems to those places that won't push back.
Exactly.
And there are neighborhoods that can't push back or that won't push back as effectively.
That's why they're doing it.
And we need to, we need to be aware of those places. I think the Jade neighborhood is really being dumped on badly. We're pushing them from, from Montevilla's side. You guys are pushing it from your side and they're all ending up there. So I think the city together needs to think not just about how badly we're being dumped on, but, but this problem should be a city-wide activity, something that we're all conscious of. We're looking out to each other.
I can't believe what on the campground was temporary. Giant campground.
They just need to be off the street.
Okay, if there's no other business, we'll adjourn the meeting and there are cupcakes over here. Please help yourself.